Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for November 18th, 2024. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Here.
Thank you. Corona Savagnano. Devlin.
Here.
And Rethel.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
Yes. The county fosters, pardon me, public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person comment, public comment, rather, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members, and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H Street, Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
Thank you. If you please call item number one.
Your first sighting this evening, Commissioners, is PLMP 2023-00046, and it's for use permit, special development permit and design review. It is located at the southwest corner of West Elkhorn Boulevard and Metro Air Parkway in the Natomas community, and the environmental document is an addendum.
Good evening, Commissioners. Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review. This is a non-contested item, so we can do a presentation if the planning commission would desire.
Any requests for a presentation this evening, Commissioners? Any questions for staff this evening? All right, seeing none, we can invite the applicant up if they would like to address the commission, not required this evening, but you are welcome to if you would like. We'll get you sworn in.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give the commission is the truth? So help you God, and if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, if you would state your name for the record and then make this statement, I have been sworn.
Leslie Bernside, and I have been sworn.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thanks. I'm going to keep this fast. I don't really have a presentation. I just wanted to say we were very excited about having the first commercial gas station here in this new plan area. It's been a great experience, learning all about the requirements out there, and we feel like we're presenting a very good package here, very attractive. We agree to all of the conditions of approval. So I'm here for questions, and let me know if I can answer anything for you.
Thank you so much. Questions for the applicant this evening? All right, we have none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't see any public comment, but any public comment?
No public comments.
Perfect, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Happy to entertain a motion on this item. Second. All right, we have a motion for staff recommendation and a second. Any further comments or deliberation? All right, please call the roll.
And Chair Rethel, just to confirm, was the second from you or Commissioner Borja?
Commissioner Borja.
Okay, thank you. And roll, Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Corona Savagnano? Devlin?
Yes.
And Rethel?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, thank you. That concludes the non-contested portion of our agenda this evening. It will move us to the contested portion. Please call item number two.
And your item number two this evening is PLMP 2024-00082. It's for a use permit, special development permit and design review. It's located at 7908 Hazel Avenue, approximately 490 feet south of the intersection of Cherry Avenue and Hazel Avenue in the Orangeville community, and the environmental document is that it's exempt.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Irving Huerta here, Assistant Planner and Project Manager, for the 7908 Hazel Avenue Wireless Communications Facility Use Permit. I'll go ahead and get us started with a brief presentation. So the project site is located over at 7908 Hazel Avenue, approximately 490 feet south of the intersection of Cherry Avenue and Hazel Avenue, within the Orangeville community. The subject site is currently developed with an existing single-family dwelling, an ADU, and two sheds. Moving on to community context, the project site is zoned agricultural residential 2, AR2. The surrounding uses, as you can see up on the screen, are primarily composed of single-family residential, all AR2-zoned. There is a place of worship just located north of the site. So back in September of 2017, there was a use permit approved for the 1,200-square-foot ADU on the site. Aside from that, there is no other planning entitlements associated with the project site, as well as no current active code enforcement cases. Moving on to the entitlement request, so the request includes the following: a use permit to allow a new wireless communication facility in the AR2 zoning district, a special development permit to allow the proposed project to deviate from the following development standards, that is the maximum height, as well as the separation from Group 1 zoning, and that would be the minimum separation requirement. The entitlement also includes a design review, and that is to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County statewide design guidelines. So there was an environmental document prepared for this project. That was an initial study mitigated negative declaration. That document was released for public review on October 18th, 2024. The impacts discussed in that document included hydrology and water quality, biological resources, tribal cultural resources, and hazards and hazardous materials. It was concluded in the document that the project would result in less insignificant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. So this is kind of like an aerial overview of the site plan for the proposed wireless facility. So this is currently right here, the parcel. I'll try my best to use the pointer right here, the actual parcel itself. So the actual wireless facility is going to be located over here in the rear part of the property, inside a 40 by 40-foot lease area. That lease area is proposed to be secured by a new six-foot-tall chain-link fence with privacy slats, and that lease area is going to be accessed via an existing gravel driveway that currently serves the existing house as well as the ADU. So this is the gravel driveway that I'm referring to, and so serves right here the existing house, and then the ADU over here, and then this will as well access the lease One thing to note, as part of the special development permit request, the applicant is requesting to deviate from the separation from Group 1 zone property minimum requirement. The requirement is three times the height of the proposed tower. In this case, the proposed tower height is 110 feet, therefore, a 330-foot separation from Group 1 zoning is required. So as shown over here in the site plan, the proposed wireless facility would be 125 feet from the Group 1 zone over here on the south, as well as the east, and then 204 feet over here on the northern side. Moving on to a closer look at the actual lease area, so the wireless facility again is going to be operating 24 hours, it's going to be unmanned. Most of the lease area is going to contain, again, just a shelter with the outdoor equipment cabinets, as well as a backup generator. Moving on to elevations, so again, the proposed tower height is 110 feet, tall wireless facility going to be consisting of 12 panel antennas and 12 remote radio units. A little bit hard to see in the image, but the wireless facility tower would resemble a broadleaf tree with faux bark, leaves, and branches. Again, as part of the special development permit request, the applicant is requesting to deviate from the maximum height requirement. The maximum height allowed for a wireless facility within a Group 1 zone is 55 feet, and currently, as proposed, the tower would be 110 feet. So these next three slides are just photo simulations taken from different perspectives around the project site. The top renderings are currently how the site or the area looks like, and then the bottom renderings are the ones where, that show that future proposed tower. So in this slide, over here on the left side, we are, the renderings, or the, I should say, the simulations are being shown looking east from Hazel Avenue, and then over here on the right side, we have the view from Creek Oaks Lane looking southeast at the site. In this slide, the, on the left side, the perspective is from Cherry Avenue looking south of the site, and then over here on the right side is the view from Excelsior Avenue looking west at the site. In this last photo simulation, on the left side, we have the view from Cherry Avenue looking southwest at the site, and over on the right side is the view from Golden Gate Avenue looking northwest at the site. So these next two slides, we'll take a look at some of the coverage maps provided over by the applicant. Kind of the, this slide and the next slide depict coverage with and without the proposed 110-foot wireless tower. So this slide currently depicts currently the existing coverage without the proposed tower. And just to give you a reference of where the proposed tower would be located, it's in this red dot right here. Might be a little hard to see on the screen, but just for context. And so this slide depicts the actual coverage with the proposed tower. As you can see, the existing coverage gap is going to be minimized with the proposed tower. So I'll just go back just to give you an idea of what it looks like beforehand, so this is before, and this is after. In addition to the coverage maps presented, they're part of the staff report packet in Attachment 8, there's also coverage maps provided to you in the instance that a 50-foot, a 55-foot tower were to be proposed instead. As well, the applicant did provide an alternative site analysis, that's Attachment 7 of your staff report packet, and that report discusses alternative sites that were looked at for possible co-location, as well as installation of a new wireless tower, as well as a reasoning why the alternative sites were not chosen. Moving on to advisory recommendations, so the Design Review Advisory Committee met on August 8th, 2024, and recommends that the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. The Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council met on September 3rd, 2024, and recommends that the planning commission deny the requested entitlements. That vote was three yes, one no, one absent. Some of the items or comments, I should say, that came up during the CPAC, there was questions that came up regarding the proposed deviations that are being requested under the special development permit. I'd say the majority of public comments that had come up during the CPAC meeting were negative, citing concerns with the site analysis report, the deviations request, concerns with property values, as well as the location of the tower within a residential area. Also additionally, the CPAC did vote to preauthorize a community-wide interest appeal. That vote was four yes, zero no, one absent, should the planning commission approve the proposed project. Moving on to project analysis, so the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with the surrounding zoning and land uses. There's no significant environmental concerns. While the project was not supported by the Orangeville CPAC, the proposed project would bring community benefit as the proposed wireless tower is a first-net facility, therefore, it would provide better emergency services, increasing the network coverage in the area. And the design of the tower itself is designed as a broadleaf tree in order to blend in with the surrounding trees in the area. The project was also found consistent with the design guidelines by the DrAC. Moving on to staff recommendation, I do want to note there is a minor typo up there, so just for the record, just wanted to correct that. Should state, planning commission, not subdivision review committee. But moving forward, the Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends that the planning commission approve the following: determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete. Adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Approve the use permit subject to findings and conditions. Approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions. And lastly, find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, subject to findings and conditions. This concludes the end of my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Additionally, we do have our applicant team present as well, and they are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huerta. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Conklin?
Thank you very much for the presentation, it's very thorough as always. I was reading through the staff analysis, the description of the alternate proposed sites that were being considered, at least on consideration. I know that has been kind of the center of a lot of neighbors and constituent concerns about the proposed site. There were some, I think, some letters that had indicated that they, you know, that their property was one of the proposed sites and was being looked over. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these proposed sites were ineligible because of contracts, lease agreements, decommissioning. Some of the property owners just decided that they did not want to enter into an agreement with the applicant, or have this kind of facility on their property. Could you dive a little bit into that, because I know there was a lot of letters being submitted, kind of focusing on some of these questions, and I thought maybe you could kind of unearth that in greater detail?
Yeah, so, pardon. So yeah, regarding the, particularly the alternative site analysis report, it's my understanding that the, it's a requirement that we ask our applicants in order to provide, given that there's been, again, in the past, kind of concerns about wireless facilities going up. I had some communication with the applicant in transmitting some of those concerns over. It was my understanding that essentially how the applicant team kind of determines kind of the sites and such is kind of the items that you had just discussed previously. So termination of contracts or leases ending, inability to co-locate due to already, the co-location being exhausted at certain towers, as well as, you know, certain property owners maybe perhaps not wanting to lease the site. I know that there was, I think, some miscommunication, maybe some misunderstanding, perhaps, on kind of the report itself, and that's something that we had tried to work with, both the applicant as well as with members of the community, to correct. I would say in terms of kind of how we came to the site, I think maybe perhaps the applicant would be better suited in regards to why they chose this site in particular. Kind of the information provided to us is looking at the coverage gaps in the area, the facility itself being a first-net facility as well, as well as the inability of, again, other items described in the report, so inability to co-locate, again, lease terminations coming up, as well as owners not wanting. Maybe perhaps the applicant could provide a bit more on that.
Other questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Borja?
Thank you for the presentation, so, when you have an attachment, such as number seven, while the alternatives were provided, do you, is your office, or do your team members then validate whether the information provided to you by the applicant is correct? Because we, you know, we received a letter here, and I don't know, Chair, if this is something that you're going to be, from another law firm, of a, of an existing tower that's already received a permit, that now we're playing a he-said, she-said in here. And so I'm a little bit unsure, it's not very many times where we get letters like this, that actually, not even just directing, direct opposition to the tower, but rather just kind of addressing what was provided to the planning staff about an existing tower north of this that could possibly be a co-location. So I was just curious to see, you know, if the applicant provides seven different, or in this case, six or seven different alternative areas, does your team then go ahead and actually review to say, these were then vetted, or do we just kind of take the information at face value? Or is there any other, like, other analysis provided to that?
Yeah, so in terms of the analysis with the reports provided, we do tend to cross-reference, again, when we do our review of our application. I would say in terms of maybe the description at each of the sites as to why they were not chosen, you know, I don't think a staff personally, like, reach out to the property owners directly. We kind of go ahead and essentially take the report and take for what it is. So when issues do come up like that from members of the community, I mean, we did have a member of the community reach out to us, and we tried to work dialogue between both the applicant as well as between them. So yeah, in the instance, we do, again, take a look at the report. In terms of, again, the findings that the applicant provides, I mean, we're not calling the owners directly, so hopefully that gives you a better insight on how we tend to review project materials.
Thank you, I appreciate it, sir. Well, what might be the easiest way, because I struggled a little bit over the weekend, to try to find the maps, a map that would pinpoint all of the, kind of the cell towers in the area, just to kind of see what we have as far as like a heat map, or just the proximity of an existing cellphone tower that might be nearby? Is there a way, is there like a GIS tool outside of what the applicant's providing, which is specific analysis to their carrier service, but does the county have like a GIS tool that says these are all the existing cellphone towers, and up to how high they're currently permitted at?
Yeah, I don't think we do have a mechanism or like a layer in our GIS or assessor's parcel viewer. I think it's a great idea, actually, that you bring that up. I think that would actually as well help us, I think, further, and maybe kind of, kind of prevent these types of situations to come up in the future. But going back to it, we don't. What we would do, or at least what I would do as a planner, is essentially type in the assessor's parcel and check every site, just to cross-reference.
Understood.
So that's, yeah. I do like the idea, though, of a GIS later, so maybe that's something I could talk with management that we can perhaps work on in the future.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you so much.
Other questions for staff this evening? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant team up, and we'll get you sworn in.
Perfect. And can you please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give the commission is the truth? So help you God, and if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, if you could state your name for the record and then make this statement, I have been sworn.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Carl Jones. I'm one of the applicants here tonight, above of AT&amp;T, my work colleague, Andrew Lisa, here to answer any questions, concerns the planning commission has got. I am also a resident of Sacramento County, I've been for close to 40 years now. I've had the pleasure of working with a few of you guys on other sites, done a lot of work with the first responders in the county, so live in Folsom, so I know this area pretty well. We've done a lot of community outreach, myself and my work colleague here, and I know it's raised a little bit of concern tonight, so hopefully we can reassure you guys and get your support. I definitely want to thank Irving for all of his time and consideration for this project. He's done a lot, and we've been here to do anything he's asked, and we're here to try and clarify anything that you guys might have questions on tonight.
Let's kick off with the elephant in the room. Can we talk about the cell tower site to the north? Is there a cell tower site to the north that exists, and why is it not shown on the coverage maps? It shows basically no coverage to the north where this tower is sitting.
So I believe the tower you referred to was identified in the alternate site analysis, and one thing that we're required to do, and kind of, federal government gives us certain guidelines, is to reach out for co-location, and obviously, that's the easiest, fastest, and cheapest route for most carriers to do. We reached out to this carrier, we have to work with the carrier, we know that the underlying landlord is definitely interested in getting AT&amp;T on this tower, but the tower company told us that this was not viable and available at that time, so we had to stick to that. So it was identified in the alternate site analysis. I'm not sure if it's shown or in the coverage maps, that particular tower.
It's blue where the tower exists, so that's where my confusion is. And are you going to join in? No, that's fine, we'll just get you sworn in. Sorry, I should have made a point of it. We'll get you sworn in now.
Okay. Is there anyone else that may be speaking?
Nope, it'll just be me.
Okay, no worries. If you please raise your right hand, the appropriate responses, I do. And do you swear that the testimony that you're about to give the commission is the truth? So help you God. And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, if you'd state your name for the record and then make this statement, I have been sworn.
Andrew Lisa, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, just for clarity, the coverage maps show AT&amp;T's existing coverage, and so although the existing tower may be in the map view, AT&amp;T is not currently on it, so it wouldn't show coverage to the north. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question. So there's coverage that exists, just not your coverage, right?
Correct. If Verizon, for instance, was on that tower, and I don't know if they are, but if they were, they would have their own coverage, different coverage maps than AT&amp;T, and they would have coverage further to the north where AT&amp;T does not.
Got it. But if I make a 911 call in that area, it's going to be picked up by that tower, right?
Which area, the existing tower, or where we're supposed to put a new tower?
When we talk about emergency response, there is coverage in that area.
Well, we're here, and the item we're talking about is like the area of the proposed new tower, which is lacking in coverage and capacity. And again, depending on where in this area the new tower goes, that you may not have 911 coverage. I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, which tower you're talking about, the new proposed location, AT&amp;T has a significant gap in coverage, and they are lacking coverage, and so there wouldn't necessarily be 911 coverage in that area.
Okay. Questions for the applicant team?
Thank you both for presenting here today. So the alternative site analysis was received April 9th of 2024. We now have under record, and I think it would be a publicly accessible document, documents from the existing party that's dated November now, 18, 2024, that does say that the existing owner does intend to have a good-faith open negotiation with your applicant team. owner does intend to have a good faith open negotiation with your applicant team to possibly discuss about co-location. Is that something that your applicant team would consider at this point?
Well, Commissioner, it's a great question. One of the challenges that we have when we're identifying locations to co-locate on, we're actually working with who owns the asset, which is the tower itself. And in this case, American Tower owns that asset. And that's who we initially reach out to for communication to determine if it's an acceptable co-locatable site. Over the course of a year, we worked with them, and in multiple occasions, they informed our office that that is not a co-locatable facility and it's not available for AT&amp;T to co-locate equipment on. So although, to your point, the underlying property owner may be interested, we still need the tower owner to be a willing party in this because that's who enters into a lease agreement with AT&amp;T.
Okay. But I guess I'm a little confused, though, because it says in here in our report, and I think this is provided by you guys, is that the ATC tower owners have informed EPIC's office that the underlying property owners are not renewing the existing tower lease.
We revised that alternate site analysis. That must be the old one. We amended that to remove that statement. Again, it's like if Commissioner Devlin is American Tower Corporation, I reach out to Commissioner Devlin, do you have space? Is this tower available to him? And Commissioner Devlin tells me that it is not available, it's not viable. But then the property owner that could be the commissioner, says, hey, I'd like to lease your ground space. Well, we can't lease ground space if Commissioner Devlin has told me the tower is not available. It's not viable.
We have, I think it's important to note, too, we've had, I personally have had conversations with the property owner to clarify that. And they are interested in leasing more ground space and trying to work with us. But again, I explain to them kind of that conundrum that we have where we're actually needing to lease space on the tower asset itself, not the ground space necessarily. So the tower company in this case, over the course of a year, informed our office on a couple of occasions that it was not viable for co-location. So, you know, it's a tricky situation, right? Where we're in a bit of a, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And thank you for. So I guess where I keep kind of going back to is like, why was this tower not available? Is this?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know the entirety of the specifics. There's many times when we come across this, the underlying property owner and the tower company do not have a long-term lease agreement in hand. There may be future plans to decommission and remove the tower. There may be something that has occurred on title or change of ownership or legality issues on title that are preventing the tower company from moving forward and extending the lease agreement. Honestly, we aren't privy to that type of detail. They don't share that information with us. They simply say if this is something we can pursue and move forward with, taking an application and beginning the process of co-locating, or if it's not available. And in this particular case, like I said, we worked with them for over the course of a year. We actually looked at multiple properties that you saw in the alternative site analysis. And we kind of started with the American Tower location. Were told no, began looking at other locations, came back to the American Tower location about a year later. Were told no again. And fortunately, we were able to find what is a very large parcel in an area that's completely zoned AR2 to allow us to get as much separation as we can from neighboring parcels with our subject parcel that we have before you tonight. And I think we came up with a design and a placement among some existing trees that's going to better stealth the facility, even more so than the American Tower location, which is unstealth. So, you know, we're trying to do the due diligence as much as we can.
I would like to add, too, if I may, that we had a lot of community come back to me saying, Carl, pick me, pick me. I had quite a few homes that people were very interested in this cell tower. And as Irving had stated, a lot of properties are not viable, they're not the least intrusive means of doing this. So this particular project is, again, it was handy for us because we live in Folsom, but I didn't think of four or five different properties that also said, oh, I would love to have that cell tower. So we've done a lot of due diligence, and it's been a long road to get here. And so it's not like we've just picked the easiest and the fastest route, commissioners.
I absolutely do not doubt the amount of effort that went in to getting to this I know that it was a lot. I guess where I'm kind of personally, just from a policy standpoint, maybe struggling as it relates to a new cell tower. We get a number of these. And so as a, I guess, a personal view of public policy, you know, the fewer cell towers, the better. I mean, if we can cover the whole city with one, that'd be great. Instead, every Monday, it seems to be another one, you know, kind of popping up here. And despite everyone's, you know, best efforts, they don't look like trees, whether it's a eucalyptus or a pine tree or whatever tree, or a big tower. So these aren't really, you know, particularly like aesthetically pleasing objects, recognizing that they're essential to our modern communications. I think we would still like to have fewer of them. So in this position, it's kind of a bit frustrating to say, to learn that it can't be done, but we don't know why, right? Is this because they don't like AT&amp;T? Like, I don't, I mean, I guess that's kind of like where I'm struggling. And I guess kind of related to that, is there, I mean, these cell towers are kind of, I guess, I would, I think an argument can be made, that kind of part of like the public trust, if you will. They're a public service, they're here seeking entitlement. Is there any sort of like requirement that is or currently that they have the, that they must kind of provide co-location when it's possible? Or is this a discretionary action once they've received the discretionary action on their part, once they've received the entitlement to build the pole? Do they then, for leaseholder of that pole, have this sole ability to say, well, you can come here, you can't?
Yeah, there's nothing mandatory, I think, in terms of co-location, the terminology we use. It's encouraged. And planners can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but yeah, there's nothing directive or there's no penalty to refusing to co-locate. Commissioner, if I may, too. There's the risk of, you know, not being approved, I guess, if they can't find, if an applicant can't find a place to co-locate. You know, as long as you're making the findings you need to make, there's always that. But in terms of an existing tower that may or may not choose to let someone else hop up there, no, there's no obligation on them to do that.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, Commissioner, one of the things that we've done in evaluating this area, you know, AT&amp;T comes to our office and says, we have a significant gap in coverage that we need to be filled. So we identify, you know, where can we go that best beats code, that is the least intrusive means, that does fill this significant gap in coverage. And in evaluating multiple properties, including the existing facility, you know, in addition to being turned down from American Tower, we identified that this location actually fills that gap in coverage more significantly. It does a better job of doing that. We're able to come further down Hazel Avenue with better coverage. There's a lot of places of worship along Hazel Avenue that we're able to get coverage. There's a lot of homes to the west that get better coverage at this location as well. So, you know, that is a benefit as well. We also made sure that, you know, it's a bit in the eye of the beholder of what tree type is the best use. We did look, though, at existing foliage on site, one of which is a 93-foot eucalyptus tree. And so we did choose the tree design to kind of better blend with the existing tree line that's out there. And then we designed the site to be co-locatable to address your concerns of, you know, there are other carriers that are not out in the area. There's other internet providers and things that utilize this type of infrastructure. And so that facility would be designed to accommodate them as well.
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, I'm not questioning the amount of due diligence that you did and your attempt at putting this in the best possible location with the, you know, fewest amount of impacts. I'm not questioning that. I guess what's on question is, is why, you know, American Tower, why weren't they forthcoming with the why? This isn't a co-locatable tower. Because again, just as a matter of policy, it'd be nice if we had fewer of these in the community than more.
Commissioner Conklin?
Yeah, I think I share the struggles of my colleagues here. You know, I'm looking at a map here in our packet that shows 11 on-air sites and two planned sites. And what I'm interpreting is that, much as it was shared before, you know, when we have our regular commission meetings, we have an applicant seeking to deviate from the height restrictions and deviate from the setback requirements in order to forecast potential co-locating opportunities. And I'd like to see, you know, if these existing towers in that area that appear to be within a two-and-a-half-mile radius from the epicenter of the proposed site have co-locating, or are they squeezing unnecessary conflict and competition in order to yield a better return, which I hope is not the case, but we're being forced to constantly waive these ordinances, requirements, what appears to be kind of, you know, hopefully not unscrupulous actors and not looking at bridging the digital divide and viewing it as part of a critical component of the public infrastructure. So I almost would like to see more information on these other sites and really root out if these are truly unviable or someone's just withholding.
Is there a question there for the applicant team?
Sorry.
That's right. That's all right. No worries. I'm just making sure before I move on to the next anyone else. I guess I have two questions. One is, it sounds like you have a willing person at the existing tower site for a ground lease. So could you explain why you wouldn't put a second tower on that existing site?
You're talking at the site location where the American Tower is?
Because you said a ground lease wasn't sufficient, if there's a tower was there. I was just curious.
Yeah.
I just read some of the residents' comments that, you know, maybe aesthetically, they would prefer clumping their visual impacts versus spreading out their visual impacts. And I go, okay, I get some, hey, that already looks terrible over there, so I'll look that way. Having two towers may be better on that site if it wants not co-locatable, or build a tower next to it which has four and take down the old ATC tower. I'm just wondering if you guys are in the business of building the tower. You know, I guess AT&amp;T would build it, but then you could move the other three over and decommission the old one.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I can't speak to the decommissioning of the existing tower. I don't know the status of that. I do know that in evaluating the area, that AT&amp;T prefers the proposed site location over that existing tower location from a coverage perspective. So there's a, it more beneficially fills a significant gap in coverage that they've identified. But to be honest, we didn't do the normal level of due diligence to develop a second tower on that site location.
If I may speak to that, the county code does not allow it. You can't build another tower within a certain distance of an existing site. In addition to the fact it wouldn't be the least intrusive means, but it states in the county's zone ordinance that any new tower must be a significant distance from an existing tower. So I don't think you can permissible building a tower adjacent to another one in Sac County.
I'm looking at staff, because I haven't seen this in the code.
Kim Brigaterra is a senior planner. We do not have a separation requirement from existing towers. We just have it from different zoned properties and property lines.
My next question is, how do you feel about a 55-foot tower? Because that's what our code currently allows. And I'm just wondering, I think Commissioner Conklin's point is there's a number of towers around. One, these could be co-locatable. But if not, to me, when I look at the map, it's blue on the top, it's blue to the north, it's blue to the west, it's blue to the east. Even 110-foot tower doesn't solve your gap in coverage. You still have gaps in coverage three out of four directions. You could go 150-foot tower, 300-foot tower, maybe solve that. But you've chosen 110 feet, which looks drastically remarkably like the tower that's 1,700 feet away. Why 110 feet? Why not 55 feet? Why not 65 feet? Why not 75 feet? Because I start to look at this, I go, this isn't just an exception. This is double the height of what the county code says. So can you elaborate on the height requirement and why not two or three 55-foot sites?
Yeah, we did look, and I believe it was presented, I believe it was presented in the staff report at coverage comparison at the 55-foot height limit.
Yes, it's in there.
So AT&amp;T, we asked them to evaluate it based on that. They determined that at that reduced height, it does not fill their significant gap in coverage. So obviously, there is some improved coverage because there's a new cell facility there, but it's not adequately filling their significant gap that they've identified. So that's the discrepancy with the height. As far as other locations not having great coverage in the surrounding environment, cell facilities operate like a cell, individual cell that work together in a network. And so, you know, to Commissioner Devlin's point, you do see more cell facilities pop up because they're kind of working to integrate themselves within the existing coverage. And as that changes and as growth patterns change and density of population changes and traffic behavior changes and so on and so forth, new cell facilities pop up to fill those coverage gaps or those impacts to the network from density and usage. So we did ask them to look at it. Unfortunately, that height does not fill the significant gap in coverage.
But you guys didn't do an alternative analysis to look at multiple sites, multiple facilities?
Well, we look at what's the least intrusive means. So building three or four facilities at 55 feet in the given search area would not be considered less intrusive than one facility at a taller height.
Okay.
One more question. If the application is granted for 110 feet, is it the intention to co-locate that facility?
Yeah, absolutely. It would be designed to accommodate additional loading for co-location.
And what would be the height of that co-located on the vertical space on that antenna? If AT&amp;T is occupying the, you know, somewhere near the top, I would imagine.
Right.
It's leasing space below it. Where would that be located?
Yeah, approximately 10 feet below.
10 feet, okay.
Any other questions for the applicant team? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open up public comment. First off, we've got Dr. Jonathan Kramer on deck. We've got Sally Weber. If you haven't had a chance to fill out a comment card and you'd like to speak tonight, please grab one of these from the back and get it filled up and bring it up to us.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jonathan Kramer. I am a telecommunications engineer. For 40 years, I'm a lawyer, telecom lawyer for 20-ish years. I represent the Starr family, which owns the property that you've been discussing, the alternative that was not evaluated. Because it's owned by American Tower, the tower itself is owned by American Tower. For clarity on the record, the alternative site that is not being considered by AT&amp;T here, that's controlled by American Tower, is fully available. The discussion about it not being available, that's news to the owners of the property. They're more than willing. The lease has come to an end, they're willing to extend that. In fact, American Tower was in the process of actually buying a formal easement for that, and then they discontinued it. And that really speaks to the problem that you have a foreign corporation in Massachusetts controlling how Sacramento County is going to have its aesthetics impacted. And that's the problem, is you've got a key party who's missing in this discussion. And that's the problem, is you've got a key party who's missing in this discussion. So please understand that the landlord is certainly willing and able to extend this current lease, enter into new lease, whatever is going to take, whatever is necessary. I provided with you through the clerk a letter. I'm not going to deep dive into it because I know you've had a chance to read it, and I appreciate that. But the key to this is that we think that the right action would be for the board here to continue this hearing, to date uncertainty, give several months to negotiate, because these contracts take a period. Primarily, our firm works for local governments and for private landlords, and we do a tremendous amount of leasing. So I can tell you that this process does take months. But taking months now as opposed to inflicting the community with a new tower that's closer to the residence, as opposed to an existing tower that's been there for decades and decades, is not a good policy decision. In terms of the existing tower, Sprint decommissioned from it, so there's space on it, it's certainly available for FirstNet. It's basically the best solution that frankly hasn't been considered. I think that, really without trying to belabor the points, I think that's the key thing here. Missing party, policy decisions. And I would close on the fact that if AT&amp;T goes on to the existing tower, it doesn't require a variance, and it falls under a different set of rules. We call them the 6409 rules, which basically grant them the authority to go on to that tower with a minimum of process. But again, the best approach here is one that doesn't inflict a new tower on the community where there's been one, a legacy tower, for decades.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Open your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sally Weber, you are up, and I've got Blake Starr on deck.
My name is Sally Weber. I reside at 8951 Golden Gate Avenue. My property extends 330 feet across the front of Golden Gate Avenue and 660 feet back. And I meet the property that we're talking about. My northwest corner is their southeast corner. And if this was allowed, well, I don't understand why you would permit it, because if you're going to waive the height restriction, you're going to waive the setback, then I am within all of those. If you weren't waiving them, then you wouldn't do it because I would be too close and it would be too high. My house is right back, right close to the back. My granddaughter and her husband live on the upper part with a deck that looks out over the west and will look right over at the 110-foot tower. It's just, this is a residential neighborhood. It's AR2. Just because it's two acres doesn't mean that there's going to be space between the people. There is not space between the tower and the people to the back of me or myself. I am here representing this community. You have all received concerns from people. You've heard how we are concerned about the electromet, I don't know the scientific terms, the technology, whether the waves and the emissions that come from these are harmful, nobody really knows. So we don't want it that close to us. We really don't. Given the uncertainty and the necessity to set aside standards that are there for good reason, please deny this request. We are not experiencing any problem. And I'm hearing that there are sincere and viable concerns about having it go up that are beyond just mine, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate so much your service. I appreciate the fact that you're doing a very hard job. And this isn't necessary. It's not needed. Please don't waive everything. The good standards are there for a good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. All right, I got Blake Starr.
Hello, Commissioner. I own the property where alternative site one is, not the tower. That is owned by my family. I'm not a benefactor to it. However, I did express that, yes, it is available there. If co-location of the existing tower is not possible, then yes, the applicant can talk to me about leasing additional space for a new tower. There's like 200-foot smud towers there. There's already a tower with a generator already there. The closest property with a residence is like 500 feet away in either direction and in greater in the other directions. Property to the north, they bought it for a church. They're planning to develop it for a church. And then the planned community to the east of that one is planned for a development. However, those residences, the build sites are over 500 feet as well. So alternative one is truly the least intrusive to the community. In addition, I want to highlight that in the alternative site study for alternative one, they stated that it was because the owners didn't want to lease additional space, not because it was not located in a spot for AT&amp;T that they determined viable, like they did with the other alternatives. So clearly, alternative one is a possible location for AT&amp;T. Lastly, I hope you guys read the comment on the negative declaration that I included. I work with public projects, and they are very important pieces of documentation, and they shouldn't be taken lightly. I want to mention that just one part where it mentions that the generator, any noise by this project would be abated by the sound ordinance, you know, county sound ordinance. And then the next one, it mentions that it is exempt from it. So it's like, which one is it? Like, when you're performing the study, like, taking it seriously, were you actually considering everything or not? It also didn't address the fact that this would be another tower within 1,700 feet from the existing one. And at least 10 properties would be located between 230-kilowatt generators. Now, they call them stealth generators, but that's just because of the decibel reduction, not the actual decibel output. I can contest that the low-frequency noise emitted by these penetrates buildings very well, and they do travel, especially in a rural setting. So you'll be placing 10 residences at least in the path of both of these. And so when you're looking at, hey, you know, I wish we had this discussion earlier, maybe with the applicant, like, you know, maybe a postcard or something sent over, like, do you have any interest? If the applicant went through and contacted the property owner rather than relying on hearsay, I think this all could have been avoided. However, I don't think that's the public's fault, and I certainly don't think it's the adjacent property owners and the surrounding community who will have to deal with the generator noise and the reoccurring beeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. All right. That concludes our public comments for this evening. And we can move on to deliberation. Oh, thank you so much. At this time, we'll invite the applicant back up if you want to address any of the comments made during public comment.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate comments from the community, obviously. Some of these we've heard, and I think we tried to address as well. A couple of things to note, as Dr. Kramer had mentioned, that I think, I believe if I heard him correctly, he mentioned that the lease has come to an end that they have with American Tower. He also mentioned that American Tower withdrew an offer to purchase the easement that's in place there. So just, you know, I've been in this industry for a long time, and that kind of raises some red flags to me as to whether or not they have some legal issues on title, or maybe there's some concern that American Tower has with the viability of the project moving forward. I don't know. I can't speak to that. But what I do know is it sounds like they don't have an active lease agreement or something that may be coming to an end soon. And they had some interest from American Tower, and then it was withdrawn. And so that may be the reason we're getting the feedback from American Tower that this is not a viable location to have AT&amp;T co-locate on. I know that was some of the concerns before. I think with regards to Mr. Starr's comments, you know, I think it's clear that he'd prefer the facility to be located on his property. Obviously, there's some potential financial benefit for that. But I do want to make note that we did reach out to property owners, and I believe he took ownership of that kind of at the time we were doing a lot of this investigative work. And so, as I understand it, transferred some other, from some other family owners, and there were some trusts that owned the property before Mr. Starr owned it. So, you know, it could have been a case of us speaking to some of the previous owners prior to the transfer of title. I can't speak to the exact timeline of that, but, you know, we did investigate other properties up and in around his parcel as well. So I would just say that, just want to just reiterate to the commission that we really do try to find the least intrusive means possible to fill the significant gap in coverage. We really do try to find sites that work. It's very challenging to find, you know, willing property owners, areas that meet AT&amp;T's gap requirements, clean title reports, you know, power, fiber. There's lots of components that come into these types of developments. And so it's not on a whim that we select the locations that we do. We really do try to find something that works best for all parties involved. I don't know if you had anything to add.
Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate the importance of improved public safety in the county. I didn't think it was necessarily tonight, but I've had many times, I've had the police chief or the fire battalion chief come and talk on behalf of some of our projects that we're working on, because they have witnessed first hands when networks get saturated. This is an area that's under a lot of development right now. There's a school plan, there's, I think, four churches in the area, which is large gatherings of people. Again, I live in the county. I live in Folsom, we've got multiple cell sites, and it's great. I know it's, we have to have it. I mean, the county's growing. So I know you guys have got a tough job to do. I actually just renewed my CPR. Been doing it for 25 years, and the emergency dispatcher that said that they have witnessed, you just happened to say what, they've witnessed many, many times and how Sat County right now is underserved with just first responders for ambulances, et cetera. Like a 45-minute turnaround time to get to Rancho Marietta, some of the outskirts of the counties. So I know you got a tough job, but again, this is critical infrastructure, and it's an area that's getting developed, and it's a very busy part of Hazel Avenue, so I wanted to take that into consideration. And like Andrew said, they do not have a lease of ATC. We can't go if you don't have a lease. It's, whether you're working on it, you don't have, it's not viable right now, that site. We can't sit and just wait. That could take years. We just don't, that's not how, you know, we operate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to commission deliberation. I can kick us off this evening. I think the alternative site analysis has challenges. And I'm not a fan of 110-foot tower. I get there is a 110-foot tower out there that's not very far away, and so that may have been the go-to height for the applicant to come and ask for. I'm not hearing any willingness for a decrease in height to come closer to county standards. If there was, I could definitely check in with the applicant later on after hearing what the other commissioners, how they feel about it. But my preference at this point would be to either defer and allow continued negotiations and alternative site analysis. To me, one of the big challenges with this is that we're looking at this, this is a network issue, and we look at a single point in the network. And that is not the best way to approach this. I understand it's constantly changing, there's multiple competing interests, and there's a challenge to doing that. But I look at this, I go, could we not solve this gap in coverage with a more robust look? And I personally don't think 110-foot tower is less intrusive or less visually appealing, especially not in the case of Ms. Weber's place. I think the 110-foot tower to her would be much more intrusive and much less visually appealing than three 55-foot towers that are spread out throughout her, throughout that couple of miles. So I guess less intrusive all depends on the eye of the beholder. So my preference would be to stick to our standards or defer and allow the applicant more time to look at an ATC second tower or some other approach to this.
I would like to just, I think, echo the chair's concerns. I heard the applicant's rebuttal with a common theme of time constraints and challenges with time, and things were not available because of transition of ownership and if they were given more time. And so I think it's less expensive to co-locate on an existing tower than to build a new tower. I think we've heard that multiple times with previous applicants. But if time is what was cited as the constraint or the challenge, then I would move to give them some additional time and bring this back to a future date for a vote at that point.
Thank you. I would, I think, share a lot of those sentiments of maybe giving them some additional time. Looked at staff and maybe your attorney. Just this issue as a, more broadly, not this project, but cell towers as a whole. I think part of my challenge is we continually, you know, have these. Nobody wants a cell tower. We all need it. So, you know, they're going to go somewhere. But by the time it gets to us, it feels like I'm dealing with somebody's, someone else's crisis that is part of some, what feels like, on the receiving end, of an ad hoc kind of reactionary plan that I don't really get to see. I only get to see this request in this moment. And then I hear, well, you know, some other actor's not willing to share their, for whatever reason, we don't know. You know, so I guess I wonder out loud, is there a better way of dealing this in a more systematic and systemic way? Can we get these providers into a room, like, what towers do you all need in the next 10 years? Like, can we, can you agree to work together? Can we be a little bit more intentional about this? Can we, you know, kind of drive some sort of cooperation so we do have fewer towers in the most appropriate locations, recognizing that we do need these things? But as they come kind of ad hoc, it just feels like, we need the tower. And I feel for the applicant who spent a lot of time and effort and resources to get to this point. And that's frustrating. I recognize that. However, it doesn't lessen the impacts in the community, though, you know, when we place these things here. So I think I have some unanswerable questions, beginning with, why isn't this locatable, co-locatable at the Tower America or America Tower Company, whatever the correct name is? And if maybe that current site isn't also a viable option since we don't have distance requirements between towers?
Commissioner Moha?
Thank you, everyone, and I really appreciate everyone joining us this evening. I do have one quick question for the staff. How are we on the shot clock or the timing in this? Do you mind letting us know? Director Smith?
The tolling agreement ends in December, December 6.
December 6.
So you would need the agreement of the applicant to, you know, as has been proposed by a commenter, continue to a date uncertain. You know, if we do that and the applicant doesn't agree to that, then it can just be deemed approved. So we would need them to agree to a continuance.
Understood. Okay, so it would have to be an agreement with the continuance by December 6, 7, or whatever that date that you had mentioned. But part of us here, too, is also to approve this, the SEQA, which I just have a couple other questions for the team here on the SEQA. A lot of the reference materials, and again, I struggled because I read all 52 pages and I looked at all of the other applications that were provided by Epic Wireless, you know, the communities, Lincoln, and everything that's... know, the communities, Lincoln, and everything that's available in OPR, Office of Planning and Research. So that's available online. And a lot of the information that was highlighted there was the 2019 FCC guidelines. The majority of what our county determination here is 1996 and 2000. And then there's a language there for significantly less without mitigation. We're still looking at the area as a highly urbanized, I mean, I can even quote it verbatim on one of the attachments. And that's where I'm having trouble, because there could potentially be, again, I'm not a lawyer, but there's, there's been significant, I'm on legal challenges, if we were to deem the SEQA to be completed and realize that there were some concerns on the actual document. And so, I do not know, I'm unable to tell what's gonna happen in the future. But again, on just a SEQA standpoint, not even talking about the policy, I do have a little bit of concerns, and I don't know, Director Smith or Ms. Manager Newton, if you can just comment on those. But again, if you were to look at just page 42, IS 40, aesthetics letter C, I mean, the language says that its aesthetic impacts are subjective, nevertheless, given the urbanized environment in which the project is proposed, we're talking about an AR2. I mean, there's gonna be consistencies or inconsistencies that, and if we were to pass and say that the SEQA is adequate and complete, that would technically be on us, in my humble opinion. So that's one concern. And again, I don't want to, you know, I'm all about, you know, providing an adequate opportunity for every applicant to state their case, and doing, not a big fan of government having to, unfortunately, wade into free market negotiations. But it does seem like there is some information that we have, where I think a number of our fellow commissioners feel that the information that we have right now is inadequate. In the number of years that we've sat on this board, there hasn't been very many instances in which a viable tower that already exists, that seems to have an opportunity for collation, was given to us and also an alternative. And so, I think that in itself poses a question as to, well, one, are we putting a high-density and heat map of these that's very closely tied together? Is that something that we need to discuss in our environmental document? I do not know. I don't know the signs, whether or not frequencies. And I do believe that the 2019 FCC document does say that we cannot challenge the science. However, it kind of remains a little bit silent about the number of, number of towers in a given area on the, on frequencies. So for that, that's a little bit of unknown, in my humble opinion. But again, regardless of the fact that they can kind of just move us by the first week of December, I'm not comfortable at this stage to let alone just approve the SEQA, where I'm having a little bit of trouble, because then that would, the community members can then take a challenge in a SEQA once it gets filed at OPR, which, then it would be behoove to us to say, hey, you have to have asked the questions before you admit that the environmental document is adequate and complete. And so, again, just through administratively, I'm already having a little bit of an issue. Second, I do echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners about policy. We do definitely agree that there is a, there's a merit and a public benefit to having the towers. However, given that there's an abundance of different things that are, I would consider as minor flags, or maybe major flags in different extent, I'm just not there yet, or do feel very comfortable moving this forward. And I do, would like to have the idea of having this continue to the date certain. It seems like our council have already mentioned to us that that might be a moot point, but I think that, for my fellow commissioners, we have the responsibility, again, look at every document, turn every page, and make sure that, you know, we don't leave any stone unturned. And right now, it's an opportunity for us to take a look at an alternative site that is literally 1,500 feet or 1,700 feet there, which we've never had in the two or three years that we've had this kind of issues come up. And again, just a number of the density, or I guess the heat maps of all of these cell towers existing that's very close to street, I think eventually there's gonna be some sort of impact that we have to kind of take a look at holistically, and not just on a case-by-case basis. My two cents. Thank you, Chair.
Understood. Any further comment, or would you like me to have some discussion with the applicant? Or, go ahead?
Yeah, no, I mean, I definitely.
I think your mic's off. Just speak loudly.
I, sorry, oh, there we go. I, yeah, I definitely want to hear from the applicant and see where we go from here. But I think just generally, I feel like every time there is a cell tower, it's the same conversation up here. So I'm wondering if, just going forward, if we can have a conversation, or we can, I know we've gotten some information in the past, but I'm just curious, the 55 requirement or maximum in the county, where that came from, how long that's been in place? Is that consistent with other jurisdictions? Just because I feel like we've never gotten a 55, or maybe those don't even come to us, but it's always 65, 85, 100. I feel like every time, there's the same conversation up here. So I'm just hoping for a little bit more clarity, I think, going forward, if we're gonna see, when we see another one of these. But definitely want to hear from the applicant, where we go from here.
We did that, I don't know how many years it's been, or if any of you were on the commission at that time, but the question came up, is the distance, the separation standard, was it put in place because, or in part, partly because of the fear of the tower falling? And we did look into that, and as I recall, the answer was no. That wasn't it. Now, what, I'm guessing visual impact is part of that, but it, the concern wasn't because of the structural integrity. But, I mean, so there probably is, if we all go back in our notes and our emails, or whatever it is, and we could probably find the response that was given at that time. You guys remember that? That was, I don't know, maybe, it could be a year, it could be five years ago.
It was in March of this year.
Okay. Really? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I recall it, is that it was an aesthetic call that was made, and the idea is, is, you know, the larger it is, the further you want from, it's specifically, basically residential properties. But as we've, we've kind of, you know, I guess what we haven't done, and maybe this is what you're asking, is more of a, how many towers do we have out there? What size are they all? You know, that's one thing that we have never really, that I don't really have a grasp on, right? Other than, you know, driving out to these locations and taking a look around, this, we actually got a map of where the other towers are this time, but that's something I don't even normally see that's in there. So is that what you're looking for, more of a statistical look at?
Yeah, I think more of that, but I think just on the policy side, is, does it make sense, or what does that process, or are we prevented from, but, or is there even appetite to increase it?
Yeah.
Because I think the conversation up here is like, our requirement, our max requirement is 55, and this is 110, so it's double. So I feel like that's the conversation, right? If it's, if we move the requirement up to 85, then it's not double. And I feel like that conversation up here is different, it feels different.
Absolutely. All right, I think we've heard from all of the commissioners now, the concerns are on the table. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, Julie Newton, Environmental Coordinator with Planning. Commissioner Borha, I was just gonna shed a little bit additional light on your comments around the SEQA document. The page that you were referencing is our checklist, which summarizes each of the topical impact areas. When it comes to aesthetics, we do have a bit more robust discussion earlier in our, in our package. And aesthetics is an approach for these projects in an urban versus rural nature. As our SEQA guidelines state for projects in an urbanized nature, we're looking to see if a project would substantially conflict with any policies that are in place. So with that, we take a handful of things into consideration, including a visual analysis that we, we look at the surrounding community with the visual simulations from our publicly available viewpoints. We also take into consideration the feedback that we receive from our design review committee for their consistency analysis, as well as our policy and policies and findings analysis to make those conclusions. And then, as it relates to the discussion around the FCC regulations, we, we include a discussion in our document for disclosure and transparency purposes, but we, per FCC regulations, we are not allowed to regulate further those projects that are already needing those standards. So as part of the submittal package, we check to make sure that, that projects are consistent with those guidelines, and then we include additional background in our documents, but we don't make significance findings.
I'll invite the applicant team back up after hearing commission comments before we take action this evening, and hear your thoughts, or an appetite for a smaller tower, more time. Sounds like we're under a little bit of a time crutch.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. I appreciate hearing the discussion, it definitely shed some light on some of the concerns. So that was very helpful, thank you. A couple of things, I just want to be clear that we're not asking for more time. We've been at this search for finding a suitable location to fill a much-needed gap in coverage for about two years now. We have afforded the county, I think, two tolling agreements to extend the shot clock to date. As I'm sure you're all very familiar, you have quite a robust review process, different than some other local jurisdictions, that requires multiple hearings, multiple meetings with different design review committees. And I think it's a good process. It does take a bit longer, which is why we had to extend the shot clock beyond what federal limits require. But we did get feedback from design review committees, which was overwhelmingly supportive of both placement, design, location. We actually worked with staff to slightly adjust some of our access routes and utility routes to prevent impact to existing trees on site. So I think we, you know, we really went through the process with Sacramento County and staff to, you know, evaluate the design and how it's impacting, and listened to all those partners as we went through the process and tried to implement those concerns into the design. With regards to tower height, that was something that was not brought up as a major concern, but it is tonight, I understand. And, you know, we are able to reduce the height to a 90-foot. We have 110 right now in the proposal, we could drop that 20 feet. I know a 90-foot tower is still a significant structure, but it's a, it's a pretty significant reduction in height. We believe, you know, we've, obviously, my office has worked with Sacramento County on a lot of different projects, representing multiple different carriers. We understand some of the concerns of the community. We were able to get that pre-authorized by AT&amp;T's engineers. So we are, you know, it's not going to be the same level of coverage that we would get at 110 feet, but it's something that they believe that they can still fill their significant gap in coverage with a 90-foot tall tower. I just, I also want to reiterate that when we did work with staff, and we did work through the design review process, you know, staff identified that this does meet general plan, it is consistent with, with what staff's looking for. And so, it's, it's our position that we would not be interested in entertaining any kind of additional shot clock extension at this point. And I just, again, we asked the commission to treat AT&amp;T, you know, on a level playing field with their competitors that are already operating in the area, and allow AT&amp;T to fill their significant gap in coverage as, as they seem, as they see fit. And I think that is this project tonight, even with a reduction in height at 90 feet.
Thank you. All right. I will kick us off this evening with a move to deny the project based on insufficient site and alternative site analysis and visual impact.
Okay, I, so I drafted up a set of written findings in the event that the commission was going to go towards a denial. So, I only made one copy, did you? Either we, I'd like to see them all, to have them all see it, so I can either, we could put it up on the screen, or we can make copies, or?
Oh, and not just the staff. There was an alarm going off back at that door. I don't know if any, I should be concerned about said alarm back there? All right, let me bring it up while we're working this.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
It was, it was making it hard to hear, so I closed the door.
They won't report it to the security.
Thank you.
Is that gonna work for you guys? Can you see it? I mean, I can read through them.
It's getting better.
Too much.
He was doing this with me, too.
Well, I could go up there and just move, adjust the paper.
Okay, so, I've got seven findings, and the commission can, you know, you can edit these or revise, or whatever you feel, you need to feel comfortable with each of these findings. So the first one, the deviations proposed by the special development permit request substantially exceed the ordinary development standards as follows. Well, officially, 110-feet height exceeds the 55-foot standard. The 125-foot to the south and east, and 204-foot to the north separation from the property line exceeds the 330-foot minimum standard. The significant exceedances exacerbate the visual aesthetic impact to adjacent residents. Second finding, the proposed development is not of sufficient size and is not designed so as to provide a desirable environment within its own boundaries. This language comes from the special development permit standard or the findings in the zoning code. The size, height of the facility causes significant visual aesthetic impacts external to project site and the property. The proposed development is not compatible with existing and proposed land uses in the surrounding area, stealth design inadequate to imitate or resemble the natural environment. Four, the proposed development will be materially detrimental to the environment, health, safety, and welfare of adjacent residents. Significant visual slash aesthetic impact on environment and welfare of adjacent residents, including reduction in property values. Finding five, the use of screening, stealth design, and architectural features will not minimize nuisance impacts from the proposed facility. The stealth design does not adequately mimic or resemble the natural environment. Okay, we're at six. Feasibility of alternative site locations. The applicant has not meaningfully demonstrated that the manner in which it proposes to fill the gap in service coverage is the least intrusive on the values the denial seeks to serve, and that is respecting aesthetics. The applicant's alternative site analysis does not offer a meaningful comparison of alternative sites. That comes from the case law, the common law, on these kinds of applications, that language. I added three of the eight alternative sites considered were already infeasible due to being located outside of the service objective. And you might now add to that one that there is a question of fact regarding the feasibility of alternative one, and if that site could actually be used. And seven, there are potentially available and technically feasible alternative sites. So, you can discuss that, if you want to change any of it, if you want to adopt it as-is, but you have to adopt something if you're, if you are ultimately going to deny the project.
Understood. The only thing on item number one, I know the SEQA analysis looked at it, and it's, it talks a little bit about what we're looking at is public viewpoints versus the adjacent residents. I wonder if it's worthwhile saying it's not only the visual aesthetic impact to the adjacent residents, but also public viewpoints?
Sure, if that is a viewpoint shared by the, by a majority of the commission, yeah.
I'd say I'm comfortable with these findings with adding adjacent residents and public viewpoints, and then adding on step, finding number six. viewpoints, and then adding on step, finding number six, that alternative site one may be a potential. I can't see number six right now, so can we push it to where number six is? Three of the eight alternative sites considered were already infeasible due to being located outside of the service objective, and one of the eight alternative sites, how do we want to word it, seems to be technically feasible, based on information received tonight.
I would concur with that.
Yeah, I would, Chair, I would actually like to, Mr. Burke said a sentence after he read number six that I think captures that, that there was a question of material fact as to whether or not we can determine at this time if the information provided in alternative one is what we can go for. So I think if we could just include that language, however, Council Burke has kind of put that there, I think that would be good. Or just leave it as is, or make that change, too.
Yeah, I think on finding number six, my wording versus your wording, what did you say for alternative number six at one of the alternative sites?
Oh, I just made a note that there's public testimony that the alternative one site may be feasible.
Period. Public testimony that alternative one site may be feasible.
Yeah.
Got it. That works for the change in finding number six, and then finding number one, just adding on, and public viewpoints.
Got that.
Any other changes to the findings to be considered?
Was that a motion?
That is a motion.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation this evening? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Borha?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Coruna Sabaniano?
No.
Deflin?
Aye.
Anne Rethel?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
You look like you have a question there. Okay. All right. That concludes item number two this evening, and we'll move to the planning director's report.
I will keep it very brief tonight, although not as brief as last time. I just want to share some news, positive news. The county Board of Supervisors last week, excuse me, two weeks ago now, adopted the first community-wide climate action plan and adaptation plan. It was a unanimous vote of all five of the board members, and we're looking forward to implementation in early next year.
We will move on to miscellaneous scheduling items.
And the next meeting is on December 2nd. Do we anticipate anyone is gonna be absent?
I'm a maybe on that evening.
Okay. Got it.
And the only other announcement is that will be my last meeting on December 2nd, as I will be serving on the Folsom City Council. And so have resigned from this board after the December 2nd meeting. That'll be my last one. Any public comments this evening?
And no additional public comments.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn at 7:06 PM. Thank you all.